This meeting of Norwood City Council was hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, as the body we congregate in these council chambers, we pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair. Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Mumper.
Here.
Do we have five members present? Both Mrs. Hanahan and Mr. Blair did let me know that they would not be present for tonight's meeting, so I thank them for letting us know in advance. I'd like to propose several amendments to the agenda. The first is to move the resolution honoring the Eagle Scouts to follow the minutes of the previous meeting. And then, right after the resolution honoring the Eagle Scouts, Mr. Dieters is here and would like to give us an update on the electric aggregation, so he would be next on the agenda. And then, we did receive emails about the ordinance to amend section 111, 1.18 and 112, 1.05 of the codified ordinances. That requires a public hearing by Planning Commission first, so I propose that we remove that from the agenda. So it would be those three items. Mr. Mumper.
I move we amend the agenda as you just stated.
Seconded by Mr. Sancker. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is the minutes of the May 23, 2017 meeting, which were distributed by email. Mr. Clark.
Move to approve the minutes as of right.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to introductory readings of resolution, and the first is a resolution honoring Eagle Scouts Devon Falkenstein and Benjamin Fanning from Boy Scouts of America, Troop Nine in Norwood. They are both here. Would you please mind coming up to the front of the council chambers? Mr. Sancker. I'm sorry, Mr. Mumper. Mr. Mumper.
Okay, Jane. I move we have the first reading of the resolution in its entirety.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Sancker. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Bonzal.
Are we going to go ahead and do all three readings in today?
We can only do one because there's five.
Thank you.
So, we're going to do the first one in its entirety. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries.
Resolution honoring Eagle Scouts Devon Falkenstein and Benjamin Fanning from Boy Scouts of America, Troop Nine in Norwood. Whereas Devon Falkenstein and Benjamin Fanning, both of Troop Nine of the Boy Scouts of America, Dan Beard Council, founded in Norwood in 1915, have earned the rank of Eagle Scout this month, and whereas each of these two Eagle Scouts earned well over the 21 merit badges required and are among the 4 percent of Boy Scouts who have risen through the five other ranks of Boy Scouting to become Eagle Scouts. And whereas these two Eagle Scouts exemplify the Scout Law by being trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent; and whereas these two Eagle Scouts planned, funded, staffed, and completed their Eagle Capstone service projects by rebuilding both wooden trail bridges 17 feet and 25 feet long at the city of Norwood's Linder Park McCullough Estate Nature Preserve at 2726 Cypress Way, projects which will benefit the people who use those trails for decades to come. And whereas these two Eagle Scouts are a credit to their parents, Mark and Laura Falkenstein, Larry and Patty Fanning, to their families, to their Scout Troop Nine, to our community; and whereas these two Eagle Scouts, after a rigorous board of review of their leadership and service to Troop Nine and their community, were awarded their Eagle Scout rank at a Court of Honor ceremony on June 7, 2017, at Zion United Church of Christ. Be it resolved by the Council of the City of Norwood, State of Ohio, that the Council congratulates Devon Falkenstein and Benjamin Fanning upon earning the rank of Eagle Scout and thanks them and Boy Scout Troop Nine for their Eagle projects rebuilding both wooden trails and bridges at the city of Norwood's Linder Park McCullough Estate Nature Preserve.
Gentlemen, we could not be prouder of you. I would like to give you a copy of the resolution, and interestingly, when we went to see what resolution number it would be, it turns out it's resolution number nine, which is the same as the troop number. Tell us, you had to raise money and everything. Could you tell us how you came about with the project?
Okay, well, me and Ben both had to do fundraising, so we had to go get out and get donations. So most of that was like sending letters to family members. For me, I sent a lot to my family, and they decided to send money back to us. I sent letters to Lowe's and Home Depot and places like that, and even Huber Lumber, who gave me a discount on wood to help rebuild the bridge.
For me, I did the same thing. I sent a lot of letters to hardware stores like Home Depot, Huber Lumber, and then Mrs. Linder was gracious enough to donate everything we needed for free to us.
Wow. And how long did it take you to build the bridges?
Well, that depends.
There had to be planning and everything.
The day that we built the bridge, it was all day. But before that, with the planning before that, it was probably like three or four months.
Oh, easily.
Yeah.
And your parents are here. Could you stand up?
Yep.
We are just as proud of you and your family. Thank you so much. I mean, there's so many people who will use those bridges. I went down to see them, and I was awed. You did a great project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just Madam President, I didn't know if the scout leaders or masters had anything to say about this.
Larry?
No, me either. So, you know, it all started with Ben and Devon when they were six years old, going to Tiger Cub meetings, and then Arrow of Light through Weebloos. And, you know, as you know, Jim, your son became an Eagle Scout as well with Max, and I got to be part of that, which was really cool. It was always Ben and Devon's desire to become Eagle Scout. And myself and Laura, we became leaders to help the boys, but they really did a lot of this on themselves. You know, they pushed themselves to get merit badges, and when it was time, you know, they said, "We want to get our Eagle." And luckily, your dad, Joe, you know, we got whole Joe Gears, and asked him if there was anything we could do in the city of Norwood, and he came up with the two bridges. You know, we could have done projects anywhere in the city of Cincinnati, but what better to do it here in the town you live in? And the boys really took it to heart. You know, they did all the planning, they sent the letters out, got all the materials they needed. You know, in Ben's case, Edith Linder, she said, "I'll pay for everything. Wherever you want, just let me know, and I'll pay for it all." And that really made it easy for Ben. And, you know, Devon was lucky. He has strong family that was able to stand up for him and help him as well. So one weekend, we all got together and helped Ben out, and then two weekends later, we all got together again and helped Devon out. And we started eight o'clock in the morning, and we were done six o'clock that same night. And the boys didn't stop. They, you know, they kept going and wanted to get it done. And to me, that, this is one of the proudest things where my kids have done, so I appreciate it.
And Larry sent me a picture. It's amazing. It's just amazing, the pictures of the boys. Did the other members of the troop help as well?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. And so, how many Eagle Scouts have come out of your troop now, since you've been involved?
Since I've been involved, five.
Wow.
Like I said, Jim's son was one.
Was Max Snyder?
Max Snyder and Vic Snyder.
Vic.
Oh, I'm sorry, and Aaron Bronx.
So six.
So six.
Yeah.
Wow. Amazing. Well, again, thank you so much. Does council, anybody on council have anything to add? Yes, Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, again, congratulations to you two, to Ben and Devon, and I think it's just a great accomplishment. I've got my two brother-in-laws, they're both younger than me, and they both have gotten their Eagle Scouts since I've been in that family, and I've gotten to see the ceremony and everything that goes into it, and it's amazing. But I think it's also, you know, I hope that you all do also know how much your parents have helped you all put into this by bearing you around, and I guess in Cub Scouts, and everything that goes into it. I mean, honestly, it scares the heck out of me, as, you know, hopefully a future parent one day, to know all that goes in there, but I know I'm, I'm very grateful for you all too for pouring into them and doing that, so just think it's a great accomplishment for all.
How many badges do you guys have?
About 46.
Forty-six?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay.
Twenty-four.
And twenty-four. Holy cow. Excellent.
And part of that, you'll see some have silver around them. Those are required.
Okay.
But the scouts determine that these boys need to know. And it's anything from cooking, camping, first aid, learn, community involvement, stuff like that. So, I mean, it's, there's a lot they have to do to get those badges. They don't make it easy.
I remember you when you were little, when you were spreading mulch for me down at Lower Millcrest Park.
You worked really hard that day.
And they put mulch underneath that playground equipment when we got curbs donated, yeah. So you've grown up, but still the same service ethic, so thank you again, seriously. Anyone else?
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. Mr. Dieters, you've got to follow that.
Not easy. For those of you that do know me personally, I would not have been an Eagle Scout. I don't think I could achieve that.
Hard work, for sure.
Yeah. I have two nephews that are Eagle Scouts, and they're, it's an incredible, it's an incredible commitment they've made, so. First of all, I would like to thank the council for allowing us, in their indulgence, to work kind of between meetings on this, and these energy processes, and I know a lot of you have been around a little while, they've seen in the gas aggregations that we do. The market changes every day, so if we can't strike while the iron's hot, a lot of times we can't get the best price. But here, I believe we did a pretty good job of it. So, the day or two after the last meeting, when we had the opportunity to finish up the pricing request and get everything back, and then renegotiate the price we got, we chose, along with the administration, Dynegy Energy Services at 5.39 cents a kilowatt-hour. That's the same rate that the folks in Greene are paying, Colrain, and Anderson Township. We did a full RFP in Anderson Township, meaning we basically opened it up to the masses because they, Anderson wanted to do that. It makes it a little harder for us because we get bids in that the folks aren't qualified to do the job. We have to have a company come in to make sure that they can fulfill the contract, have the good credit to buy the energy, all those things. So, what you have in front of you right here is the letter that the folks in Norwood are in the, from the eligible list are going to be getting. So everybody that's eligible for the program, this is what we get. We filed this with the PUCO last week. This will drop next week on the 22nd to your residents. I'm going to send over, as well as these numbers to your administration, my personal numbers, so if any residents have any issues about this, they can contact me. Second thing, we were able to negotiate, now this is from August, this is from August this year to August of 2020, it's a 36-month contract. We were also able to negotiate just for .1 cent higher, oh-one cent higher, a renewable option. So folks that want renewable energy are able to call up and get that renewable option. So that's 100 percent renewable. The default program is the 5.39. They have to call to do the renewable option because we can't, we can't really do it like that. It's kind of an adder. What happens is, as you folks know, if I live next door to Councilman Mumper, we get the same electricity come out of the, come out of the, off the line. So what they do is they take all the folks that want the renewable option, they go out and they buy renewable credits at the end of the year, and we'll give you a report on what kind they bought, so that in other places it was used, that money was used to generate renewable product. So that's how that works. So once this drops next week, folks will have 21 days to take a look at it. Like I said, when we first came in here, if someone wasn't, doesn't want to be in the program, we don't want them to be in. We're happy to take them out. And if folks are in other programs that want to get in, that happens no matter when. So if they're in a program or they have a contract, and there's a termination fee, say in September, once that program runs out, and if our price is better and they like it, they can come in without any fees of any kind. So that is part of our contract, things we insist on with Dynegy, and folks that move within Norwood also get to stay. They can come and go as they please, no charge, at any time. So that will be in, that was in the terms and conditions that they will be mailed, the folks that will be mailed. So at this point, we'll drop those, they'll have 21 days to decide what to do. They really, that's a PUCO mandatory time period. We make the supplier do what we want him to do, them to do, and that is come and go as they please. So there's no obligation at any time. This is about, I guess it's about 14 percent discount. The last thing we did when we priced it is, the day that we got the final number back from Dynegy, we got in the future auction numbers for the utility, and we were able to extend this program 10 months at 5.09. So at the end of the program, that's the highest it can be. So at the end of the program, we could actually drop it down even further than that.
That's amazing.
So, basically, you know, what does this mean? You know, it means that your residents are going to save 14 percent off of their line item energy bill that they get every month, and nothing's going to change, no service issues, nothing like that. And as I've said all through the process, if anybody has a problem, pick up the phone, call us. I've already helped several residents already that have called our offices, and, you know, they've all been 100 percent satisfied. So that's where it is. The contracts have been executed. There's no more need to do anything. If, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them at this point.
Mr. Sancker.
Okay. In part, to the resident's seizure bill, it's not going to say regular gas rate 5.60. Your rate 5.39, you know, less 14 percent.
No, it's going to say 5.39. What I'm referring to is the price to compare is 6.15 cents per kilowatt hour. That's what the utility charges.
My point is that when you say maybe see a 14 percent savings, you know, they could take your bill from last month and compare it to the bill. It's not going to say, hey, guess what, your bill is 14 percent less this month.
If they do that, they're going to be confused out of their mind, because what happens is, if you've ever looked at your bill, yeah, all of those riders and things like that are going into the one line item, one line item price. It's going to be a lot easier for them, and on the back of that bill, it says what the price to compare is. So it says, it'll say 6.15, and you turn it over and you'll see 5.39. So it says, if you would like to change, it's in the middle of, back of your bill, it says, "If you're going with a third-party supplier, understand that your price to compare is that number, the 6.15." Now, everybody's different by a smidge. Every home is different, so we use that average, but that is the new price to compare. So we had just calculated that just at the end of May.
Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I think this is an exciting day for the citizens of Norwood, especially to know that they're not going to have to do anything, and people that don't currently have a contract, they're going to be able to save money. So, Madam President, I appreciate, you know, all the stuff that you helped to do as well on this. I do have a question, though. So let's just say somebody has a contract with a third-party supplier, and that contract expires in September. You know, for me, it's happened before where it might expire, and that third-party supplier then raised my price. Again, this has nothing to do with the aggregations, this is way before it, but they like doubled my price because my contract expired, the thing that they were using to get me in, and now they raised it up. So when this expires, will they automatically go into the city of Norwood program, or will they have to call to make sure?
They have to, they have to call us. So what we'll do is, we will, we basically give you folks something for website, newspaper, whatever you want, saying if you're currently in a contract, and I'm going to send that over tomorrow morning to Brenda, and what, it gives them instructions on how to reach out to us and get that done. They can do that at any time, even though they could do it tomorrow and say, "I want to go on in September." The big thing we're trying to avoid is making sure people don't jump out of a contract and jump into the Norwood program and get hit with a hundred or $200 or $300 termination fee. That's, that's not good. I mean, you know, our goal is to save people money. That would eat up their whole savings for three years if it was a $200 or $300 termination fee. So, so if you know of anybody, you know, direct them to the website, and they can take a look at what we'll give to, what we'll give to the city, and then we'll get them, you know, where we need to get them. We don't want any of that to happen. By the same token, I mean, it's, we certainly don't want to jump into the program and trigger that ourselves, and we don't want them to get doubled. But what you're talking about is a PUCO mandated deal where when you're dropping out of a contract, they have to give you a price, and they're hoping you don't notice a lot of times. And it might be two, three times the rate that you were at. We just had a lady in Anderson Township that was paying 17 and a half cents a kilowatt-hour for the last two years, and she was paying, and it was the same price, Norwood's gas and Anderson's gas are, I'm sorry, Norwood's price, Norwood's gas is the same as all the other ones. They don't have a gas program yet, but she was paying, I think our price was 4, 45 cents, and she was paying like a dollar 62. So you really have to watch, you know, what you do, who you call, who you hand your bill to. We've, I mean, I think we've discussed this pretty frequently. It's, it's best to just not give your bill to anybody, you know? And if there's a better deal out there, and they call me and they say, "Listen, I found something at 5.29," I'll explain to them, well, it might not be a three-year deal, it might be a six-month deal, I'll explain to them the traps and the pitfalls of those things, but I'm not going to talk them out of it. I'm just going to give them the, give them the straight story.
Mr. Bonzal.
Okay, if I could follow up. And so, I guess if residents don't, the residents that are on a third-party plan, they will not refer this letter, so that should...
They are not on the eligible list.
So that should be an indication to them that they might want to, if they don't know that they're in a contract, they might want to double-check or possibly...
That's, that's correct, and this letter will also be on the website too, so people can, people can print it off or just go to it and then give us a call, and then we can, we can help them, we can help them examine their bill and make them understand where they are. And I can't tell you how many times I've been on the phone with a resident of one of our communities, and they say, "Could you get on the phone with me to this supplier?" And I'll sit there and I'll direct them through that, and it's actually kind of fun to ask all the questions that they don't know the answers to. But you just got to make sure the folks are well-informed on this thing and understand where they are with their energy bill, because it could be in the hundreds of dollars a month if they, if they make a mistake with one of these, one of these guys that comes to your door or solicits you on the phone.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We look forward.
If there's any questions, any issues, don't hesitate to give us a call. We'll be happy to, and I think you all have my email, so just shoot me an email if you have an issue, and I'll be happy to promptly take care of the issue. Thanks.
Thank you for your work. We've removed everything else. Let's go on to other requests to address council, and that is Darlene Rogers. She'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President, council members. I'm Darlene Rogers. I used to live on Oak Street in Norwood. I now live in Anderson. I'm, I have close ties with Norwood. I lived here for many years. I worked at General Motors in the factory when I was 20 years old. So I'm, I'm running for judge. I'm not related to anyone or was born with a silver spoon in my mouth. You know, I worked in a factory and worked my way through school, and first became a teacher, and then later in life became an attorney. I currently have my own practice, and I also work for Sheriff Jim Neal. So I'm very closely aligned with the jail and the issues with the jail and our court system, and I'm running for judge because we need to get folks who are more concerned with the heroin epidemic that's affecting many of us in Ohio especially. Ohio is the most affected state in the entire country, and there's many reasons for that, and it's very complex, and the treatment solutions are very complex. And my goal is to save taxpayer dollars by not spending $65 a day to keep drug users in jail, to keep homeless people in jail, and to keep nonviolent offenders in jail. There are so many other options, and what works for opiate addiction is for folks to be in treatment. It has to be a locked-down facility treatment, or they walk away, or they jump out of moving vehicles to not go. The addiction is that difficult to overcome. So there are models working in other states. Currently, our judges, I disagree with pretty much everything they're doing because they just want to say, "Lock them up, lock them up, lock them up." And we do want to lock up folks cutting heroin with fentanyl who are trafficking and killing people. We want to lock those people up. We want to lock up violent offenders. We want to lock up anyone who's making our community unsafe, and we want to give them tough sentences. But anyone that's just overdosed or using heroin should be in a treatment facility where they're actually going to get treatment that can potentially cure them of the, of the disease. I listened to a doctor in Mason who said, "We should treat heroin addicts like we do diabetics." And everybody stopped, and he said, "Diabetics have a small dose of insulin every day. Heroin addicts have a small dose of opiate every day that's non-euphoric, and for some it will be for life for them to not die of an overdose or to keep on the path they're on." It's interesting, there's a lot of discussion about what the treatments are, but for that doctor, he felt very strongly that treatment should be nonjudgmental, that rather than having all of our people die, you know, in record amounts, that we need to get past that and have no moral judgments, and just let's get to the treatment programs. I'm about, I'm all for giving that an ear because that is working in other counties and other states. So we also want to use our tax dollars more wisely. We want to get our homeless into shelters, out of the jail. Currently, we have a jail built for 875 people, and there's currently over 1,400 people in the jail, and we're paying that bill. So whether, you know, it's for humanitarian reasons to get them out into programs and treatment, into homeless shelters, or if it's to save tax dollars, it's kind of this, you know, we're all going to win by getting the jail below that number of 875 where it should be. Otherwise, they're going to want to build a new jail that holds more people. So we just keep continuing the cycle. So I'm Darlene Rogers. I am running for judge. I will be on your ballot November 7. Typically, only 30 percent, 30 percent of people vote in on your election, so I would really appreciate if you all came out and voted this year. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Sancker.
Yes, Madam President, I believe on everybody says there's a, maybe force strength of the tax budget for 2020. for 2018, and I was wondering, Mr. Stith, would you like to go?
Mr. Stith?
Yeah, we put together a tax budget which shows the actual revenue and expenditures for 2015 and 2016, our projected revenue and expenditures for the rest of 2017, and projected revenues and expenditures for 2018. It shows at the end of this year, a deficit of $2,539, and the, in 2018, $1,588,123. So still not having enough money to pay all of the expenses. I did sit down with the state auditors, and we compared numbers on my projections with their projections and putting together the fiscal emergency plan, and we are within $100,000 of each other on our independent projections, so the numbers are pretty close. The tax budget is the first step in the planning for the budget for next year, and it comes out in June, really it has to be processed by the end of July, and it should be used as a planning tool for how much money is available and what the projected expenses are the following year. A lot goes into these first really, the big three pages, pages three, four, and five kind of encapsulate everything else, those are the most important ones. If you want a copy of this, there are some here in the council chambers, there's also some available by coming to the auditor's office or the clerk of council's office, and it's also online on the front page of norwoodauditor.com. You can download the PDF and print it out or just read it. The public hearing for this is scheduled for two weeks from tonight, I believe?
That is correct.
And that's one to actually discuss and comments taken on it and the vote taken hopefully that night.
Mr. Sankar, did you want to follow up?
No, I just wanted to get that to everybody as a chance to review it before the next meeting, which will be the public hearing, and then if it is voted upon, then we have enough members of council here that has at that evening, and we submit it then to the county board for review.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Mr. Bonsell?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a question to, on this, are we going to also be looking at the fiscal recovery plan that night as well?
I'll have more information on that as we, when you all get finished, I'll, I'll let you know. Is there any other new business? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President, just a follow-up, that the Norwood pool that's been open between our last meeting and this meeting here, from what I understand, it has been pretty well attended, and with the weather, like it is right now, but expect more, so hopefully, being it is open, hopefully we can get it well-attended, so it makes it well worthwhile to maintain that pool.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Sankar?
Yes, Madam President, just, obviously, the grass has been rolling pretty rapidly the last few weeks, and there are a number of yards around the city that the grass has not been cut. So if, if you do have people in your neighborhood that have saw cuts, report it, you can either call anybody here on council or report to the health department, they'll write up orders, and then the city will get around to cutting it and assess their tax bill with the, with the charges. I know I get a couple in my ward which are on the list to be cut, but it's just a matter of, there's, it seems like there's more and more of them every year, that people are abandoning houses and just letting the yards be overtaken by the overgrowth. So they are getting to them, but if you have them, report them, so we keep them on the list so we don't overlook any of them. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other new business? So Mr. Sankar and I have met with the state auditors who are doing some of the projections for the financial plan, of the recovery plan, and they were trying to come up with a good way of presenting what projections they have to council, and so it was, I suggested that we have a committee on the whole meeting, that, before our next council meeting, so that they could present the numbers to you. It's depressing, but they could make it next Wednesday at 6 o'clock. That date is the 21st, June the 21st, at 6 o'clock here in council chambers. I know that Wednesdays aren't always good nights, but it was what worked for them. So the plan is, hopefully, that after the committee on the whole meeting, that maybe you could come up, you all could review it and look at some suggestions, and they can go back and take those suggestions and incorporate them into a recovery plan. If not, we may need to have a special council meeting in order to review it and adopt that financial recovery plan. It does have to be, I think it has to be by law adopted by July the 3rd or something like that, July 3rd or 2nd or 3rd?
7th.
July 6th?
I thought it was the 7th.
I don't know. Anyway, we may, we may have, if it's not prepared by the next council meeting, we may have to have a special meeting. And then it goes to the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission, who reviews it and either approves it, denies it, or sends it back and asks questions, or, you know, revises it, or, so they have to act on it as well. And if it's rejected by the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission, then council has 30 days in which to make those changes and get it back to them. Yes, Mr. Bonsell?
Yeah, so I personally will not be able to make that date. I mean, I could make, I know that that's the date they have, so if it works for everybody else, that's fine, I will-
It wasn't too much of an option. I tried to keep it on Tuesdays because I know Tuesdays are usually good for everybody, but it was the only date they could do it, so. It will be here in council chambers at 6 o'clock. Wish I had better news. Yes? Mr. Stith?
Yes, Madam President, I will not be in attendance to that meeting, but I did want to say that I met with the state auditors, we went over the draft of their numbers, they are very close to the numbers that I came up with independently, and I agreed with what they had.
Acknowledged that today, that you all were very close to each other.
And so I can't be here for that, however, I'll, I'll tell you, their numbers are, from my opinion, pretty good, so.
Any other new business? All right, we'll move on to communications. The first is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court filings.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of May 2017. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Mumper?
The move letter being received and filed, and I'd like to wish that we could increase the revenue here. It used to be in the 30, $35,000 range, now we're under $20,000. There's a secret here somewhere, but it's not being disclosed.
Is there a second to receive or file? Mrs. Stickley? Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from the Norwood Hometown Fireworks Committee regarding the 14th Annual Hometown Fireworks Community Event.
Dear Mayor Williams and members of city council and citizens of Norwood, the Norwood Fireworks Committee wishes to welcome everyone to the 14th Annual Norwood Hometown Fireworks Community Event, which continues to grow and develop as a family tradition for great food and 4th of July fun. The Norwood Fireworks Committee has assembled entertainment and onsite activities for families to enjoy. This year's event will start at 7:00 PM with DJ Steve the Greek, who will spin tunes guaranteed to make you want to dance. Backed by popular demand, our fabulous faces, with new designs to turn your face into a walking work of art, and Jonathan McQueen, who is an amazing chalk artist. Also new this year is the Bebop bead booth, where you can make a wearable colorful beaded bracelet. Hungry? The food trucks are definitely yummy. Mountain's barbecue will keep it smoking and savory, and Granny's goodies and Kona ice treats will keep it cool. And let's not forget about the delicious hot dogs served up by the Boy Scouts Dirt Dogs. One of our favorite things to do is the Rockin' Raffle. We couldn't do this raffle without the support of the many wonderful sponsors that provide some really great prizes. New this year, at 9:40 PM, there will be a stage show prior to the fireworks that includes a musical medley that salutes our men and women in the military, the talented Norwood High School cheerleaders, and the announcement of the winner of the master of the fireworks. The grand finale will be the spectacular Rosy Famous fireworks that will light up the skies. In the near future, we may have a few more attractions to announce. The Norwood Fireworks Committee reaches out to local companies and organizations and encourages them to participate in the event through the many sponsorship packages that are available. We would like to acknowledge Alfred Motors as a hosting sponsor this year, as well as acknowledge those companies that are platinum, gold, and silver sponsors. All of the companies will be acknowledged on the entertainment banner and the NHF website. It is not too late, and it is easy for a company to participate. Sponsorship dollars help offset event costs and get company names out into the community. Contact Marion at marion@m s c h n i e g dot com. The Norwood Fireworks Committee gratefully acknowledges that an event of this caliber could not happen without the professional, dedicated committee members, civic groups, volunteers, and local business resources, as well as the cooperation of the City of Norwood and the Norwood Board of Education. So join us as we celebrate freedom, pride of community and family on the 4th of July. See you there. Please note, no alcohol, coolers, and pets are permitted on the stadium grounds or parking lots. Thank you.
Mr. Bonsell?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the letter be received and filed.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We do have two absent members, Mr. Mumper?
I move we excuse the absent members.
Seconded by Mr. Bonsell. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Mr. Mumper?
I move we adjourn.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonsell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes.
Mr. Mumper?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.